I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone, and welcome to the Bryan City Council meeting of September 6th on a Tuesday. So first on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 15th meeting. Council, you have been presented with those minutes? And have you seen or are there any additional corrections need to be made to those minutes?
Hearing no corrections, I move we accept them as written.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, next we have hearing of public concern, and that is someone that can, anyone can address council that is not on the agenda, and we do have a couple people, I believe. Go ahead, sir, Mr. Dean Spangler.
Good evening, I'm Dean Spangler, I live at 825 Wesley Avenue, which is the corner of Wesley and Market. Markey, I've been there for, I think, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years, something like that. As you all know, this weekend on Sunday, we'll celebrate the dedication of our new middle school and high school. This is a wonderful accomplishment for our community, and I think one of the most important steps that can be made in economic development. Without good schools, we have nothing, and without good facilities, our professionals aren't able to do their valuable work. I commend the school board and the administration for building, a new building while at the same time running their day-to-day business, which many of us know in the private sector, it's a big, it's a big job just to keep things running, let alone go and build something at times. So kudos to them. Many of us, I'm sure, have been in the building, it's really amazing. The technology's amazing, the layout's amazing, it's gonna serve our kids for a long, long time. However, with good things that happen, there are always new challenges. And our city and council, and our leaders within the city are gonna be faced with some challenges as this new school comes online. And particularly, they're gonna become more severe next year when the renovated middle school becomes K through five, and you then will have pre-K all the way through twelve on one campus, which is a great, efficient advantage, but it's gonna create traffic problems that have not existed before. And because in the past, council did not require, prior councils that were, they're not even alive anymore, did not require sidewalks of when the Peters Edition was developed. There, we're gonna have the very frightening issue of young children walking in the streets, which is where they walked to the middle school previously. Now it's gonna be very young children in just a year, gonna be walking on streets that are also occupied by teenage drivers and adult drivers as everyone kind of heads to that area every morning. Obviously, you know, if I could solve the problem, I'm not, I'm not restrained by rules or regulations or anything like that, and I would, I would start immediately by putting stop signs everywhere I could. I'd make a three-way stop at South and Markey, I'd make four-way stops on the rest of the streets that intersect Markey, which I think are Westeria, and I forget the other little three-way that comes out there that'll be four-way. I'd go four-way at Barrister and Wesley, I'd go four-way at Barrister and Cardinal, and maybe some other areas, to try and slow people down, and make the, that through route on Markey and going through on Barrister cautious areas. Now, I don't have any kids walking, so, you know, for me, it'd be an inconvenience to actually make all those stops, but I think we need to make some of those streets less convenient, less desired, particularly in the morning, so that we're not, we're not mixing young drivers and children. And I'm sure that the chief, his budget's already burdened, so he can't have cruisers out there every day, all the time. And so, but stop signs do slow people down, they're inexpensive. And I'm sure that council may have reasons why we can't do that, and our engineer may have reasons why they can't do that. I would just challenge you the same way I used to challenge people at Spangler Candy Company. Instead of telling, figuring out reasons you can't do something, please try and figure out a reason to do something, because I have a real fear that at some time, I'm gonna have to come back to this council talking about a young child that's been hurt or worse in that situation, or a young driver that's, you know, had to experience the pain of injuring someone. So please, think about this carefully, have your staff approach this with what can we do and how can we do it? As I said, I'm really excited about the new school. It was getting increasingly difficult for us to attract white-collar people to Bryan. They were, they were setting their sights on Archibald, Molossion, and so forth, and now with new schools, that's really helping. And I'm really pleased to tell you that last week, we hit four-hundred-and-ninety-two full-time employees at Spangler Candy Company in Bryan, and I expect we'll go over that magic five-hundred number here in the coming months. So we continue to grow and do our part, and I challenge you to come up with ways to keep that area around the new school and the, and the new school that opened next year as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to Dean if I could.
Yeah.
Dean, I think that was great. Sometimes you have to, you have rules and regulations that are there, but you also have to use common sense and on top of that. So I think as we look at that thing, we have to, maybe the rule says you can't have a stop sign in a particular place, but common sense might tell you, you can have stop signs there. We had that same thing with the light out at Townline for a while, can't have that stop sign. We finally got this, so, common sense kind of sometimes prevails. Now, I go to Northview a lot of times, 'cause my kids are in soccer and everything down there, and they have very similar areas like Bryan leading into that, but they've done something, and I don't know if that's something council would consider, but they have fifteen-mile speed bumps. They have the stop signs, but every once in a while, it's a fifteen-mile speed bump. It's not the extent that they have in the parks, but that does slow you, slow you down as you go into Northview. So I'm sure that's something we can pass back on to our.
I don't know what the solutions are, I knew what I would do if I could just be dictator.
Yeah, that's right.
But none of us can, but I also know that particularly when it comes upstream to the state, it's very easy for those people to just say what you can't do.
That's right.
And you have to push, push them hard, and you have to say, no, we're not accepting that, that answer. And, and the easy way is always to say, well, we can't do it.
Yeah.
So please figure out a way, because I don't, nobody that I've talked to about this has said, no, you're wrong, there's no, there's no risk here, there's no exposure.
Yeah.
So where there's exposure, the other thing I was gonna mention is there, there are safety school grants, and they're federal grants, and they're available for sidewalks, traffic control, all types of things. You know, I hope we're pursuing those, we should've started pursuing them the day that we approved the schools.
We did, and, and the funding is clear out to eighteen or nineteen right now to get those grants, so, but there's other ways around.
Right, but you, I mean, eighteen, that's, that's coming fast.
That's right.
So, and the older I get, it's, like Mark Twain said, it's like toilet paper, the closer you get to the end, the faster it goes.
That's good. Thank you, we appreciate your remarks.
Any other comments, any council?
I'm gonna comment on that, Dean and I are actually neighbors, and I moved into that neighborhood about eight years ago and have watched people run that stop sign daily. And I have told all of my neighbors, because this is a hot topic, I've had neighbors come on their bikes in the evening and talk to me. We've had tea on my porch, we've, you know, had a lot of conversations about this. And my concern with stop signs is it gives kids a false sense of security that that car is actually gonna stop, and that doesn't happen. I will tell you, last week I called the police department, I talked to Christie, and they did increase law enforcement patrol out there. I do know they have pulled people over in the last week.
Three pickups.
And, and that's random times, so I would prefer not to use tennis balls at people running the stop sign. That was a avenue we approached at one point when our kids were little, just to get their attention. But it is, it is an issue. It's an issue all the way from Center Street, I feel, to Portland, but I think Markey is gonna be a path for everyone to take once this school starts, the school year. So I guess I encourage all of the council members to put their heads together and see if we can do something before something tragic happens.
Carrie, there could be other areas that we're not even aware of.
Right.
Creep up, you know, South Street itself is bad all the way out through.
Yep, I would agree with that.
Is the bus route, the new bus route that they're doing, is that out in that area too? Do they have the signs up for the bus routes out there?
They don't pick up there.
No, not there.
Okay.
I think they travel down Center and Fountain Grove, but I have had bus traffic even now on Markey.
And speaking of that, that's another area that, that's all new, and all these bus stops on Mulberry and on the other side, and kids are gonna go up through the alleys and to that, everyone's gonna have to be on their toes for a while, even this year. Next year's even gonna be worse, but this year, you gotta be on your toes, know what you're doing out there.
And we're not gonna have another meeting before school starts, and that's another thing, is for drivers to be cautious that there are all of these new bus stops out there, I'm not even aware of where all of the signs are yet. But we're gonna be having kids that are in groups, maybe just two or three at a time, but on High Street, on South Street, on Mulberry Street, where you're not used to seeing kids congregated. So everybody's gonna have to be really cautious and really patient over these next few weeks to know that where these kids are and be concerned about their safety.
Yes.
That's right.
And pickup times is gonna be dark.
Great.
Yeah.
And if a little kid thinks he's, a little kid thinks he's gonna miss the bus, he's gonna make a mad dash right out in front of a car.
And, and we're dealing with something new too, where we used to have high schoolers at Portland Street, and now we have little kids, second through fifth grade, that aren't used to crossing a street to get to their mom's car either. So I think everyone's gonna have to be really diligent in the city, as far as drivers go. Watch the speed signs, if it says twenty-five, maybe go twenty the next couple of weeks until you figure out where the kids are going to be.
Okay, the only comment that I wanna make, and Dean, absolutely, it's, it's not a negative comment, but you just, you just said, which I wasn't aware of, that they've increased, Mike has increased patrol in that area, picked up some people, okay? I can show you a couple letters from people that wants increased patrol on High Street. I've talked to people, or people talked to me about people running stop signs on Pleasantwood, right there where you used to live, that coming out into whatever that is, not Navarre, but Bel Air, or something like that, you know? So you got that, so, and then, if you just wanna look at the log, and I, sometimes I don't even waste my time on it, but that log in there is that these guys are going to the hospital, and they gotta stand outside while a patient is allowed to smoke, you know? So what does that do? That takes officers off the street that should be patrolling area of the city and things like that, you know? So, I hate to say it, but the bottom line is, if we wanna do it right, and I think that we're, you guys are exactly right, the more patrol that's down there, the more visualization that they see of police down in an area, whether it's that area or High Street or wherever. Right now, Mike doesn't have the personnel. So, so the other thing is, we may have to bite the bullet and bring on more personnel for, for what we're doing here. You know, do it the right way, you know, things like that. I just think that, I agree with your stop signs, you know, would definitely help, but I'm not sure that's gonna really slow down the speeding. I mean, it depends on who it is, you know, some young kid, he stopped this side, you know, he's gonna crank it up to forty-five, fifty to get to the next stop sign, you know? So the only way, I think, true to handle this is with added patrol in that area and watch it in the mornings and in the evening when school is out, and things like that, to make sure that everybody understands you guys are present, and, you know? But along with that, then you have other responsibilities and.
And that's something I've been sharing with my neighbors too, I mean, they know we're four officers down right now and working on that.
Yeah, right.
And they appreciate you guys being out there, I should make that clear too. But it is something, I mean.
But I agree with you, we need to do something, 'cause, you know, it happened, what, a year and a half ago? Two years ago, right up there by the church, at night, dark night, and here it was elderly gentlemen, but it was rainy, dark, and things like that, you know? It's gonna happen. So again, I don't wanna have anybody injured or hurt, you know, whatsoever, and that, that'd be tragic. So I agree, we need to really look at this, this real hard, from all different avenues.
Yeah, but all these bus stops, they will not have supervision at all of them. And kids like to play tag and things like that when they're waiting around, and so we have to be very diligent in watching out for those kids at those bus stops that are unsupervised.
Yeah, I don't remember, I think just on my street, East Mulberry Street, I don't know, there's probably five or six, there's five or six stops down there.
Same with Wilson.
Yeah, right.
And that's one thing, if you, if you're concerned about where they're at in your neighborhood, the Bryan City Schools does have their bus stop route on their website and their flow of traffic request. So you might wanna take a look at those, even if you don't have kids in the school, but you're going to work around those times of day, and just kind of see where you think the kids are gonna go as far as bus stops. I know they tried to keep them off of High, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's one on High.
There is one on High.
Even the flow into the, into the middle school and the high school for parents loading and unloading in the buses, that's gonna be trickery until they get used to that.
Sure, all new things have growing pains, we just have to make sure nobody.
One thing that I don't know of, or I'm not, I'm not aware of, I have not seen it, but I talked to Diane Savage the other night, and I asked her about the traffic survey, and I asked her if it included Markey, and she said it did. And she said Bryan would have, he has the numbers of what they think that traffic will increase there. But I, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's gonna be a lot, or ten percent, or what, I have no idea.
He would've been here tonight, but he took you all, and so was not able to come, but we gotta get those kind of things. But even those, even that, that out there at Fountain Grove, that didn't warrant a light for a while, and took so many crashes until they finally said, well, you're okay. I mean, we put it up and took it down, put it back up again, so.
Okay.
But we'll get with him and look at that.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay. Lanny Wright, Mr. Wright?
Thanks, Dean. Thank you, my name's Lanny Wright, I live at 136 Avenue A, here in Bryan. Been in Williams County since sixty-five, have been in Bryan since ninety-three. I love Bryan. I've, I enjoy everything that Bryan does for its residents. I've been very happy, I've been at 136 Avenue A for ten years. And up until two weeks ago, I was extremely happy. And then I was very disappointed when I came home one morning late from running errands. And they were, I'll use the term that I used when I talked with the mayor, chip ceiling my street. When I bought the home ten years ago, it was a paved street, now it's a gravel street. Now, I just, the mayor just spoke with me a few minutes ago, I have two issues that I wanna bring up and discuss, this being the first one. The mayor has put me at ease to some point, because my biggest concern was we were going backwards. On top of that, ten years ago, when I bought my home, I had a garage floor that was in deterioration, and I had an industrial company come in and put a beautiful epoxy floor on it, very heavy-duty. Not one of these brush-on-with-a-brush-type jobs. And in two weeks, it's showing the deterioration of all the stones that I drag in stuck in my tires, 'cause these stones are very small, eighth inch to half inch. The mayor has assured me that once the, it's an oil, and then the stone, and once it's set up, then they'll come in and they'll sweep it all up, and that will seal the areas that were sealed. What raises my biggest concern was, two years ago, half that street already had new pavement in that block. They put a storm sewer in, which a year before that, they come in and told me I had to disconnect my sump pump from the sanitary, which I understood why, but that's the way it was when I bought the place. And then when I went to do it, got Brad Cox come in and, okay, run me a ditch out here and tie me into the storm sewer. He says, is there any storm sewer on this block? So I called the engineer, and yeah, they put a storm sewer. Point is, half the street was brand-new. And it could've been fixed right. So, the mayor has assured me that it's going to be improved, and I'm pleased with that, and I appreciate that. The other issue I wanted to bring up, I think sometimes maybe we oughta look farther ahead, you know, when we go to repair things, and maybe doing them right the first time might save us some money down the road. The other issue is with Avenue A, with the change in the schools and with Washington closing. Of course, that's always been a bus route, and I understand that. Parking is one side of the street only. That street is a thoroughfare for getting from High Street to Center Street, or from Center Street to High Street. It's heavily driven. And, and especially with the stones now, some of them don't have sense enough to slow down. There is a lot of speed, I've, I've run into a couple of the officers over the years. You ever wanna come park in my driveway, you're welcome to it. Pick up, pick up a few speeders, because they, they travel pretty fast on Avenue A. But with the changes in the school, if you would consider opening that up to parking both sides, I don't think that would be any different than Avenue B, there's parking on both sides. I have a neighbor to the south of me that has anywhere from six to eight vehicles of a evening, late afternoon, and through the evening and night parked. And that's just a small lot like mine. I have a neighbor across the tree, the street, that has seven and eight vehicles, and they put half their yard to stone because there's no place to park. There's three different places right in that same area where they're parking in their front yards, because it's only parking on one side. And rarely is there a place in front of my house to park. I don't need to park there, I have a garage, I have a driveway, and most often, you know, I don't have more than one or two guests at a time. I think it would slow down traffic if it was parking both sides. The school is not an issue anymore, the bus route's not an issue anymore, and I just wanted to bring it to your consideration, to give it some thought, just like you're gonna give the other issues that were brought up here tonight some thought. I think they all have merit. And with that, I thank council for all the good things they do, and I still love Bryan.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I address Lanny?
Yeah.
What you say about Avenue A is one of the problems we have right now with Avenue B, that they are parking on both sides, and the people are coming to us and saying, hey, there's too much traffic, we can't even maybe get a fire truck down through there with that. So you got both issues going.
That's something I should've thought of.
In the same area.
With my history.
And the garbage trucks to get through, and also the snow plows to plow, you can't do a very good job doing that kind of stuff, so, that's out there.
It's just up for consideration, okay? And I, I take your input there very seriously, I really understand that.
In fact, I expected people here tonight on Avenue B to tell us, just do the opposite of what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Council have anything else for Mr. Wright?
Thank you for coming, I know, I know what it's like to have speeders on your street, so I sympathize with that.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. Thanks, Lanny. Okay. All right, next, we have a second reading on an ordinance, so Lori, would you please, number and read again, please?
Ordinance number thirty-five, two thousand and sixteen. An ordinance revising the City of Bryan codified ordinance section eleven oh three dot zero two concerning uses and definitions to prohibit the cultivation, processing, and retail dispensing of marijuana for the purpose of medical use in all zoning districts of the City of Bryan, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Rhonda, would you like to please make some comments again about what's going on in the state? Or what isn't going on with the state?
Okay, Governor Kasich passed House Bill five twenty-three, which will take effect September, he signed it June ninth, so it'll take effect September ninth. And of course, that then is allowing for medical marijuana to be considered legal in Ohio. That is still in opposition to federal law under the DEA, which still determines that marijuana is not legal by DEA standards, however. That therefore poses a problem in Ohio in regard to use and how the regulations will be set for medical marijuana, both in determining who is a patient for medical marijuana and how medical marijuana will be regulated with regard to dispensing, distributing, cultivating, and that type of thing. The problem is for us, is that those regulations are not in place and will not be in place for a year. And I know this is a bit of a controversial issue, because people want people to, that need medical marijuana to be able to obtain it. They will when and those regulations are put in place. The problem for us right now is we don't want dispensaries and things coming into Bryan that is gonna violate our zoning laws, that's gonna cause an enforcement issue for the police department, because we don't have those rules in place. So what this is asking for you to do is to not allow this in Bryan. At such time as you're satisfied that the state has created those regulations, and you wanna take a second look at this, that's up to you. But for now, what we're seeking is for you to place a moratorium on this passage until the state has put those regulations into place, so that we can handle this with our own zoning laws and our own enforcement rules in the city.
And that way, we have, with the state in there, now we have some backing on that.
Right.
Yeah, right, support there. Okay.
I've been tracking this too, Tommy, through all the papers and so forth, and we're not alone now, just in the press and the Toledo Blade, towns put brake on marijuana sale growth. They don't have the rules set in place, it's gonna take two years to do that, and, and you got Ohio City like Akron, Archibald just passed, you have other ones that passed the same thing. It's not that they're exactly against that, but they wanna give the zoning people a chance to get the rules and regulation, what we really want here and how we can control it. Every time something happens, they change it within the next week or so. At first, I said, attorneys can't help any pot business, they either set up one way or the other. Already that has been looked at, and they, I think they're allowing any attorney to take a look at that. Every time you read the paper, something else has come up. There was a nice article in our Cities and Villages, they're doing the same thing. So it's not that we're opposed or anything, but we're just putting the brakes on to say, hey. And that doesn't mean somebody that can't, that needs it can't get it, I mean, they can, they might not get it here, but they might get it through express scripts or going to any pharmacy someplace that sells, you know? So that's, that's the reason for the ordinance was put forward, to give us some time to take a look before we jump into something we don't want.
Last time we suspended this for one reading, and if this has to take effect by September the ninth, we won't meet again before that. So we're gonna have to make a decision on this tonight, correct?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I have been talking to various people, to convince me of which way to vote on this. And most of the people I talked to say that we don't need it, and, no, they're not professionals and so on, but people in the community say if we can, if, if we're gonna have it, why not have it dispensed here? So, you know, it's just like other. So, uh, you know, it's just like other, uh, bad drugs that if people, you know, use them in the wrong way, that we have, that we are presently dispensing drugs here. And, uh, I'm, I'm trying to get convinced of one way or another to vote on this, and I, I, I haven't been convinced yet. And I know that the state's gotta come out with rules yet, and we're not there, and I, I, I don't know. I mean, I think, I know a lot of municipalities are wanting to not touch it, so I, I'm, I'm at a quandary.
Well, I've gotten, I've gotten one phone call, and one person has talked to me in, in person in regards to this. And both of them were in favor of, to us passing this ordinance, okay? I have not gotten any negative comments whatsoever, so, I mean, the, the Rite Aid issue was a bigger issue than this, as far as the public that I've seen, you know? So, um, so I guess we, we need to make a decision tonight, as of, I guess, right now.
Kind of a clarification, really quick?
Yep, sure.
Okay. So, say someone has cancer, someone has seizures, and they go to the doctor and they get a prescription for this. Can they fill that prescription somewhere outside of Brian and still use it in Brian?
Right now, you can't even do that. There, there aren't even regulations in place to determine that you're eligible to receive it.
Okay.
The, they, the phar- the pharmacology board has to determine how that's gonna be dispensed, who's gonna be able to dispense it. Those regulations aren't even in place yet. I can't answer your question.
Okay. See, that's my concern. I, I think that passing this would be a good idea just because then we can decide, based on what the state decides, where we need to go with it in Brian.
I wanna say, I, I came here tonight and very, very confused as to what direction I wanted to go, but I was leaning towards voting no on, on our ordinance. Rhonda's explanation, I, I guess in my mind, we have, you know, and we're, we're looking at the cultivation, the, uh, uh, the distribution, things like that of, of this. And, uh, I read the bill, and one of the things that, that concerned me when I read the bill was the board that's gonna make the decisions hasn't even been formed yet.
Right.
So, um, and they have, once the, the board is formed, they have a year to, to come up with the regulations. There's a, I, I think that there is a lot of good that can possibly come from this down the road. But like I say, my, I think I've been swayed now, um, to maybe proceed a little more cautiously at this point. I'm not against having that availability. If we're gonna help somebody who has cancer or something be able to deal with those things in a better way, then I think that, that that's something that we need to look at. I've talked to, uh, a physician. He was against the whole thing to begin with. He thinks that it was a terrible decision for the state, but that's not what we are deciding. Uh, it, that's a done deal. So, looking at what is in front of us right now, I'm beginning to sway the other way, that we, to vote towards holding off, letting them make some decisions, and then coming back and looking at this at another time.
I think with that, the responsibility lies on us to make sure that we come back and revisit this issue in a year, year and a half. I mean, I, I don't wanna say we're gonna revisit this and then we forget.
Yes.
We need to make sure.
We definitely need to revisit it at a future time if this passed.
You, you not only have to do that, you have to look at your handbook and your workplace rules and everything, and how you're gonna handle that, uh...
Coming soon.
Yeah.
I hear that was.
Yes.
Regardless of this bill, there still is, that bill encompasses zero tolerance policy at, at the workplace.
Yeah.
So, that will have to be modified as well.
But if we're looking at the, in, in that regard, we have zero tolerances for, uh, certain medic- medications now. If a person is on them, should be on the job. So, that just goes along with that.
Yes.
Okay. I think we're ready for vote, so anybody, um...
Make a motion, we suspend the rules.
I'll second. Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Hesitantly say yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Entertain a motion to pass.
So moved.
Second. Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
For the big.
Thank you.
As long as we can open it up later.
Yep, absolutely. I agree with that.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have an ordinance, so Lori, would you please, uh, number and read?
Ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand sixteen. An ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty-six, two thousand fifteen pursuant to SB one seventy-two, to amend the due date of quarterly withholding payments, specifically section one eighty-one dot zero five one, and to amend section one eighty-one dot zero eight one, removing the cap on credit for tax paid to another municipality, and to amend section one eighty-one dot zero nine one to amend the receipt requirement for electronic funds payment of tax and declaring an emergency. If you want, I could start, um, speaking on this. Um, in two thousand fifteen, the state of Ohio signed by Governor Kasich House Bill five, which required the municipalities to adopt a more uniformed tax code. And part of it was to have our quarterly collections date changed to the fifteenth of the month following the month end. They have since decided, in their infinite wisdom, to switch it back to the thirtieth of the month following the month end. In addition, they have made a change with regard to the electronic funds transfer, which are normally conducted through the Ohio Business Gateway. But electronic fund transfers are payment to be considered made on the date of the timestamp assigned to the first electronic system receiving the payment. So that gives us, um, a little cloudier, um, definition of when the monies are to be coming in, but it is according to the time that it is entered through the electronic system. The third change that's proposed in this ordinance is to remove a cap on credit, which was passed in two thousand fifteen, which would allow, um, full reciprocity for tax paid to any other municipality to be allowed through the city of Brian. And, um, that was a decision that was allowed to be, um, considered during two thousand fifteen, and at that time, council had approved a cap on credit, and now they would be removing the cap on credit. So in other words, if you work in another municipality that has income tax, and let's say they withhold at one point five percent, Brian would allow that one point five percent credit to come into the city of Brian. Thus, the taxpayer living in the city of Brian would pay three tenths of percent to the city as you are currently doing. So it would basically be no change from the way it is today. Any questions? It's a fifty-seven-page ordinance, so three changes. The state has, we have been told through Ohio Municipal League that there will be more changes coming to this ordinance. It is an in-depth, fifty-seven-page tax ordinance. It was a sweeping change last year. Not all of them for the good, and not all of them well thought out, and they've told us that subsequent changes will be coming. So this is version one.
You're stapling them, going through that, Judy.
Well, again, they continue to, to do things down there that puts the municipalities in great despair and uncomfort, and a lot of extra work. And with that, you can thank Mr. Cliffhite. So, anyhow.
And could we say that if this is, that due date is starting with the third quarter? So we need to have...
So mid-year.
It's gonna be as of September thirtieth, so we also need to have this passed to coincide with the state law to change the due date for the third quarter.
It was passed on June fourteenth. You got ninety days till it goes into effect, similar to the marijuana. You'd have ninety days to make a decision.
Yep.
I would suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a liquor license, uh, transfer. Uh, who's gonna handle that?
I'll take care of that. You have that in your back. Are we gonna do vote? Can we do vote?
There's two?
Yeah, there's two.
I have one.
Yeah, we can do that by motion. The first one was, uh...
They're together.
Yeah, they're stapled together there. The first one is out at Mike's place, and that was a trans, Saint Holt's McCarns got that license, and, uh, it's doing business as Mike's place. That was a change. Uh, they always have had that, uh, license out there, so it's, it's nothing new that they haven't had, but it's just a change of ownership, who owns that license for that business. The second one dealt with the Walgreens uptown, and that was a, uh, a change of corporate stock. Somebody else, uh, bought that stock for that particular license. They have had a beer-only at Walgreens. That's, that's what that's gonna continue to be. No change on that. So both of those, uh, I would recommend we don't have hearings on those. They're already in place. It's just, uh, some changes of ownership and, and so forth.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay. That is all that we have on the agenda. We'll go around the room, and then after that, we're gonna take a short recess, and we're gonna go into executive session for acquisition of property, appointment of personnel, and compensation of personnel. So first, we go to Chief Willis. Are you requesting additional patrol people now? Is that gonna be your issue?
Yes. I just wanna talk a little bit about the school. I mean, with, with the, the school opening up, uh, there is gonna be a lot more traffic, a lot more congestion. The drivers need to slow down. Uh, they need to be more alert, watch for other vehicles and pedestrians out in the area. I wanna remind everybody that all residential streets are twenty-five miles per hour unless they're marked otherwise. Cardinal, Wesley, Marquis is all twenty-five miles an hour. Fountain Grove is thirty-five, both east and westbound. Uh, there is gonna be increased enforcement out there, uh, as long as I have officers that are available to go out. Uh, there will be, uh, uh, more presence, police presence out there for the, uh, uh, traffic, both in the morning and after school.
Okay, good. Thank you. Chief Siders, anything, okay? From BPA, uh, Dick, anything on your end? Tom, Eddie, okay. Uh, Judy?
Just to say again, please, please be careful when school opens next week. A lot of little kids that are not gonna be paying attention, so just be very careful. We don't wanna have a incident. Thank you.
Carrie?
I'm sorry.
All right, Rick?
Uh, I just wanna, uh, expand on, on what Judy just said. One thing that is going to, uh, happen next week is we are going to have students in places that they've not been before. And so keep that in mind, that even though you haven't seen children there before, they may be there now. And especially those first few weeks, drive with caution no matter where you are in, in the town because we certainly don't want any kind of incidents.
All right, Keith?
Okay.
Well, just going along with that, uh, every year we hear, "Well, schools open now, drive safely." We really gotta be on our toes here in town with the new changes going on. That's it.
Ms. Lori?
No, sir.
Ms. Rhonda?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, I have nothing other than just to echo what everybody has already said. So Mayor, do you have some things?
Outside of, Diane put a, uh, invite in there to, uh, uh, nine eleven at two o'clock. And you wouldn't get that at your house. She asked, "Could I pass that on to council?" Uh, nine eleven is a dedication, and, uh, I think three to five is the, uh, tours of and reception of the building. So, uh, council's certainly invited from the, the school board to that. And that's all that I have.
Okay. All right, um, well, like I say, we're gonna take a short recess, and then we'll go into executive session. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. No, I don't.
I don't wanna do that.
No.
No.
All righty.
You guys can all leave.
Dismissed.